Tickets started, now you're ready for this. All right, welcome everyone. Today is Tuesday, June 14th, 2022. This is a special meeting of the City of Asbury Park zoning board of adjustment. Notice that this meeting has been published in the poster and the Asbury Park Press. And Mr. Harris will be our chair for this evening for the separate meeting only. Mr. Harris, will you please call us to order?
Thank you, I'll call order. This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the poster and the Asbury Park Press by publication of the annual meeting notice and posted on the municipal bulletin board and the municipal website. All notices are on file with board. Secretary official notice may be taken on the following matters before this board. Fire exits are located along the east and west sides of the council chambers as well as the back of the building. I will ask everyone with a cellphone or other device to kindly silence your device for the duration of the meeting. This meeting is being recorded by AP-TV and will be available for viewing online. Can we have a little call, please, Samin?
Thank you. Daniel Harris?
Here.
Brittany Drummond?
Here.
Bill Potter is recused. Tim Slitt?
Here.
Wendy Glassman is recused. Bonnie Knopf?
Here.
Joan Scully is recused. Russell Lewis is recused and Christopher Avalonny is recused. And joining us this evening again, thank you very much, is Barbara Kerzak.
Special guest.
Special guest. So only doing her first tonight.
Okay, thank you. This is a continuation of the application for City by the C. Mr. Thomas J. Caltebalota, if I got it right, sir. 411 Memorial Drive, Block 2303, Lot G in the R1 Zone.
Mr. Harris, for the record, as you know, the applicant did have to renotice because this is a special meeting and a different time than we normally meet, so I did review the notice and we do have jurisdiction to hear the matters even.
Thank you very much, sir. I might call the attorney, the attorney for the applicant, Mr. Kennedy, please continue.
Hello, good evening, Mr. Chairman and ladies and gentlemen of the board. And on behalf of Kevin Kennedy, on behalf of the applicant and on behalf of Dr. Tom, I thank you for agreeing to this special meeting. Number one, special meetings are tough to begin with. Number two, they're particularly tough in the summer. And three, they are particularly, particularly tough when you have a seven o'clock meeting afterwards, so it is very much appreciated. Mr. Chairman, what I would like to do is just recall Dr. Thomas Caltebalota. He has some testimony information to provide, just to supplement some of the concerns that were raised at the prior meetings. And then afterwards, I'm going to briefly bring our traffic engineer up to address some of the other questions and concerns that came up at the last meeting. And then I have our planner, you have not heard from the planner yet. And that's, knock on wood, that's my presentation for tonight, so with your consent, I'd like to call Dr. Tom up.
You may, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, yes. Swear affirm that the testimony you're going to provide this evening will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do. All right, so Dr. Tom, in lieu of me asking questions, I just know you have a couple of things to add based upon our two prior meetings and based upon some of the prior questions and comments, and we're hoping this is the final meeting, so I wanted to give you an opportunity to sort of express some comments, concerns, and also address some of the other concerns that were raised.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Good evening, board members, and thank you again for dedicating your time to this our third and hopefully final meeting. I was going to bring a crew of puppies and kittens with me for support, but didn't want to influence your decision tonight in any unethical way.
And if we mark them into the record, Irene would have to take care of them.
Too much work.
But I hope that we have proven our case sufficiently to demonstrate to you that
by repurposing this building and restoring its beauty, we will only be improving the city of Asbury Park. At our first meeting, we discussed how important Asbury Park is to deciding where and why for our facility. Tonight, I wanted to take just a bit of time to help the board understand why a veterinary facility and briefly discuss the state of the profession. Veterinarians are very different from human doctors. We go to school for just as long, but need to learn the anatomy, physiology, and ailments of every species. We are emergency doctors, the surgeon, the dermatologist, the ophthalmologist, and many other gists, including psychologists to the frantic pet owner that we comfort and placate every day. We are a trusted profession, more ethical than your own doctor, and in previous polls, more than clergy. It is our compassion that is trusted. However, this compassion comes at a high price, because unfortunately, the vet industry also has one of the highest rates of depression and suicide compared to others. We exit veterinary school with north of $200,000 in student debt, only to be rewarded, rewarded with stagnant wages, long days and nights, weekends, and many holidays away from our families. This exorbitant debt really pushed me and my decision to become more than an associate but a private practice owner. As such, I could also make an impact in improving the well-being of the veterinary staff and the industry as a whole. In addition to providing well above average wages for our staff, we also cover 100% of the healthcare costs for our entire staff. We sponsor team-building exercises to support mental health and well-being exercises. We drive a positive culture inside and out of the building with several fun drives, community service events such as beach cleanups, support for local police and fire department events, Little League sponsorships, and much, much more. We have opened this up to our staff to not just include events within the animal industry, but passions for my staff as a whole, so that we could support their passions as well to improve the well-being and mental health of our own staff. Unlike our company, globally, practice ownership is being eaten up by large corporations like Mars, NVA, and VetCor. You can now buy groceries while your pet gets its vaccines. Supporting our company will be a vote against these large corporations and supporting a local business. COVID created 21 million new pet owners. We saw this increase in Asbury Park as well. This is a dog city, it cannot be avoided. You drive in and out of town and you will see no fewer than five people walking their dogs at a time, probably more. It's a good thing. It's also a cat city, but only one-third of pet owners bring their cats to the vet because of the stress for the cat and the cat owner. As an AHA accredited facility with certification in fear-free techniques, we are working as leaders to improve visits for all pets. While COVID affected many boarding facilities during the shutdown, daycare and boarding have completely rebounded since then. In Asbury Park, there is currently a dog beach that is largely unsupervised for off-leash play with limited hours and space in the summertime. Many times crowded and hectic, this location has come with resistance and complaints from some beachgoers. Our new facility could reduce these issues and provide a place to exercise pets in a safe manner and reduce the number of potential complaints to the city. Pets improve our mood. They help treat depression, PTSD, and other mental illnesses. They get us moving, lower our blood pressure, improve cognition, and increase our immunity. Keeping them healthy is by association, keeping each other healthy. This is a noble profession. Our company wants to stay in Asbury Park. This building sits just a few feet from a high school where students face after-school challenges every day. Our clinic has plans to create an internship program in working with animals to create animal trainers, nurses, veterinarians, administrative professionals, and business owners. While vacant, this building is a risk to contributing more to the crime in Asbury Park than public good, and I believe it has been for some time now. With just restoring and occupying the space, we will reduce crime with increased security alone. Since our last board meeting, I have gone door-to-door to meet the surrounding homeowners and was not surprised to see that many were already our clients. All who are supportive are our plans without concern for parking, sounds, and smells, because they would not continue to support us if these were factors. None that I met, none that I met with, including those that are non-clients, were opposed. All of them want this building restored and they want a locally-owned, family business, a trusted profession, to occupy that space for years and generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any board members have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I may just ask two quick questions?
Absolutely.
Just for the record, Dr. Tom, I know that there was, you had raised, well, first of all, it was a very eloquent presentation, so thank you. And I know at the last hearing, you had said something about, hey, the fact that the high school is so close, there might be some opportunity for an internship.
Correct.
Why don't you talk a little bit about that?
So with working students after school, especially during the summer, you know, we actually just hired three young individuals to just be in the clinic. Unfortunately, it starts out with cleaning cages and mopping floors and some of the grunt work of the clinic, but they are learning. I'm showing them x-rays, I'm showing them how to read blood work, you know, and it's fascinating, because not only does, not only is it helpful to just, you know, see inside yourself how, you know, you once felt that way and avoid burnout and all that, but it also is a good refresher for us, the veterinarians and the staff to also, you know, we reteach ourselves, because they ask questions that we say, you know, I don't quite remember, let's go look that up together, you know? So it's a really good, not just exercise for teaching, but also team-building as well.
And last question, I know there was a lot of discussion last time about, hey, might it be too hectic if Asbury Park High School has a football game at night? And our traffic engineer is going to talk about that in a little bit, but just as an aside.
Correct.
Obviously, you talked about your support of Asbury Park and support of Little League. I know you support Blue Bishop Football. And if, as our traffic engineer will testify shortly, if we were fortunate enough to get the approval, and if, after the facility is built for the next two or three years, if the city or the school board came to you and said, hey, listen, it's really too hectic here on these home Friday nights, would you be able to close early on those Fridays for the four, five home games we have per year?
Yes.
Would that be something that you could work with?
100%, yes, yeah, we have no issue.
And Mr. Chairman, I would say there's only four home games, but I'm going to be cautiously optimistic. I think if the high school has a really, really good football season and they qualify for states, they might possibly have two home games, so we'd be willing to do that. And that's a standing invitation that if, after we're built for the two or three years that that came up from the city, we would be willing to do that. I would only suggest that if it doesn't come up after the three years, then it sort of goes away, but that's, I mean, it's just something that we're willing, we want to address everything we possibly can, because we believe in this project and we're hoping that we get the approval, so thank you. I have no further questions for the witness, sir.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Do board members have any questions?
Oh.
No? Okay, board professionals, any questions? Okay, does the general public have any questions? Okay, one is questioning the witness. Okay, we'll go ahead and proceed to your next witness.
Sure, we'll bring up Andy Jafola, he's our traffic engineer.
You swear affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And your name again for the record, spell it as well, please.
Andrew Jafola, last name J-A-F, as in Frank, O-L-L-A.
Okay, sir, would you please give us your credentials?
I'm a registered professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I'm also a professional traffic operations engineer, principal at Dynamic Traffic.
Mr. Jafola was accepted as the traffic engineer at the West.
All right, thank you very much.
And Mr. Chairman, because he was testified, I'm not, unless you all have specific questions, I'm not going to have him repeat any testimony that he gave last time, but I know you have some additional information to provide, sir?
Yeah, so I mainly want to respond to some of the comments and concerns that came up at the last meeting, not only from the board members, but there was also a member of the public who spoke about the Sixth Avenue Railroad crossing. So, you know, we got some information on there and I'd like to just, you know, share that with the board. So the Sixth Avenue Railroad crossing, we were able to get in touch with someone from NJDOT on the Railroad Diagnostic Safety Unit. Whenever railroads are being studied, this unit, NJDOT, is always involved. While they weren't able to share any specific information, because it isn't ongoing study, they basically stated that every railroad crossing in Asbury Park is currently under review at this time. That means that some of them may be upgraded, some of them may be modified in a certain way, and some of them may be closed. So nothing specific to this railroad, only that it's under review. So with that in mind, everything I'm going to talk about now, moving forward, if you recall at the prior hearing, if you're looking at the board over here to the right, the prior hearing, we did count the parking stalls on Sixth Avenue east of the railroad. So if that Sixth Avenue Railroad were to be closed, it would be, while it could be done, you know, people could use those stalls by walking to Sunset, crossing the tracks at Sunset, and then coming up to the facility, we decided to just omit them from the parking count. So I'm going to talk about some more data and information, but I just want to let you know that if in fact it's closed, we are omitting those stalls, we're not really relying them on that, with the information I'm about to provide. Now, I don't want the board to misconstrue my words or have a misunderstanding, I want to reiterate, because this is typically a very sensitive thing with the DOT in the town, nothing has been decided about the Sixth Avenue Crossing. It is strictly only under study by DOT, along with every other crossing in town. This is just out of an abundance of caution in this scenario that they do decide to close it.
And for the record, will this be a new exhibit?
Yes.
Okay, so I think we are at exhibit A6.
And just, Andy, identify for the record what A6 actually is.
This is an aerial view of the project area, showing Sunset Avenue, Sixth Avenue, and other surrounding streets with areas that we perform traffic, our parking counts at, as depicted. So, you know, with that in mind, we did go ahead and, you know, there was some question about additional parking in the surrounding streets. If you recall at the last meeting, we testified, or I testified, we took counts along Memorial Drive, along Sixth Avenue, both east and west of the railroad tracks. What we've done since then is we've extended the count program to, again, count those areas for another day, as well as count Sunset Avenue, both east and west of the tracks, all the way up to the high school. Now, you know, I'm fully aware that some of this parking area is used by high school staff. There's also a vocational school for cooking, and there's also the culinary, the Brookdale Culinary, Culinary School there, that's run by Brookdale. So just out of kind of full transparency here, we did speak with the Culinary School of Brookdale, that school was in summer session, so that any of the students that would normally utilize, that would normally park for that school would not have been present during our counts. But what I can say is that we did speak with the school to try to get an idea of generally where they do count. And what was expressed to me is that in the areas marked as C and D, that's the angled parking stalls right in front of the sports field, as well as the parallel parking stalls directly across from there, it was generally where they would park. And we had this conversation before we did the counts, and when, sure enough, when we went out and did the counts, we could definitely see that there was a lot more parking available in that area, really indicating that is truly the parking that they were using. So while we did go ahead and count it again for those areas of D, C, for areas D and C, we really relied on the previously performed counts, just because those were performed when the school was in session. So, and with all of that in mind, we took additional counts on Wednesday, June 8th. We took those counts from 8:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. So just as a reminder, the office would open for veterinary appointments at 9:00 a.m., so we're really capturing the counts a half hour before they open, and then we're carrying those counts all the way to 4:00 p.m., which is really when you see the parking demand associated with the school die down. Based on that information, you know, when we took, really, I broke down these counts. We have areas A. We have areas A, which is Memorial Drive, B, which is Sixth Avenue, east of the railroad tracks, which I mentioned we're omitting from this. We have Area D, which is the parallel parking along Sixth Avenue, which is west of the tracks. Area C, which is the angled parking along the sports field. We have Area D, which is Drury Avenue, which is really the area between Sixth Avenue and Sunset. Generally, this was utilized by school staff, students, what have you. Area F, again, same story, we noticed that this was really filled up during the school hours, but we did count Area F, which is almost directly in front of the Asbury Park High School. We have Area G, which is about half of Sunset Avenue between Drury and Memorial Drive. We have Area H, which is the other half of Sunset Avenue between Memorial and Drury. Then we have Area I, which is Sunset Avenue between Main and the railroad tracks. So I just want to kind of remind the board what we talked about last time, which was that the applicant anticipates at peak operation, assuming everybody drives to the facility, all staff, 20 employees needing to park on the adjacent street system. One thing I will say in speaking with the applicant after the hearing and just getting a little more clarity, six of those employees today currently walk or bike to the existing facility, so it's not, you know, we talked about it last time in generalities, that they may do it, you know, if you guys have some experience on doing it. And I'm sure you can get up and testify to that, you need to hear it directly from him, but again, what I've been told is that six employees currently do that. So if that same staff were to come over at opening, we really only have a need for 14 stalls. But again, I'm going to be speaking to this as though everyone is driving, which would be 20 parking stalls being used for the staff. So again, to reflect, this railroad being closed, we threw out the parking counts for big. To reflect the fact that the Culinary Institute was out for summer break, we conservatively threw out any availability for parking areas C and D. When we counted, E was generally used, so we're kind of saying that's really more for the schools and not really for us. Area F, same thing, when we counted that, generally that was pretty much utilized by this whole facility. G, I would say was about 50% occupied. And then what we found was areas A, H, and I were generally available, just to give you some numbers. In these areas, there is about 20 parking spaces available, and that was fairly consistent among the two, I'm sorry, we did count two days, we counted January 8th and we also, I'm sorry, June 8th and June 2nd. Now, the other thing that we did, because it is difficult to really just say we counted two days, I think that was a concern that we heard, is that we only counted a couple days, we also utilized an aerial imagery service, nearmap.com. And with that service, you can go back and review aerial images through the database, you know, to the beginning of their database. So their database started in 2014. So we went back and we reviewed every single aerial image from 2014 all the way through to their current imagery. And what we found is that the availability in this area was very consistent with our counts. So we have a high level of trust in the counts that we performed in comparing to the aerial imagery. And if we just want to kind of talk about this area as a whole, you know, looking at the aerial imagery, those days, what we did was we isolated those days just for school days in the typical school season. This area as a whole, omitting Area B, so again, this would be all of this in red with the exception of B, had around 50 to 60 stalls generally available on each one of those aerial imagery days. So to put that in context, the only aerial images that we paid attention to were days falling on a Monday through Friday during the school year. Any days that fell on a weekend, we threw away. Any days that fell in the summer months, we also threw those away. So again, when we omit B, and just a...
Do you have a timestamp? Like what times were they?
Sure, so just the number, once we throw out and we filter in all of those, it was 16 aerial imagers that we were able to look at. And the typical timeframe was 9:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. So the way that service works is you drop a pin on your map, and with that specific pin, it'll tell you, it's typically a 15-minute range for when that photo was taken, and it gives you the day. So again, when we combine the review of the aerial images, we also look at the various counts that we performed in the summer, November of last year, and then two days in June, we found a lot of consistency here. I feel very comfortable that there is adequate parking to service the staff here. And we really consider that the doctor really has a desire to hire from the neighborhood. It's proven in the fact that he has six staff coming from the neighborhood today. I have every reason to believe he's going to continue to do that, and that as he grows his business, he would continue to look for those staff. But in the event that he does have the full staff, that all reliable vehicle, there is sufficient parking in this area. Last thing I'd like to point out, this is Steiner Place. This is a road that parallels the railroad tracks, just east of the railroad tracks, between Sixth Avenue and Sunset Avenue. It is, there, I have not, we looked at every single aerial image, not one image showed a vehicle parked, well, we see a truck here, but in general, we didn't see anybody parked on that road. We're not relying on it, it's a fairly, you know, as opposed to Sunset where you can stripe a parking lane, you can carry two lanes of travel, it's a little bit narrower in there. But I really say that, and the reason I bring it up, is that there are 17 parking spaces that could be utilized on Steiner Place. And all the aerial images that we look at, nobody is using them today. There are yellow curb, you know, some of the curb is painted yellow at the intersections and you can't park there. There are no signs restricting the parking. So in the event that something were to change in the area, I do expect that these would still become available. And again, so you have 17 additional stalls, that's really outside of anything that we looked at. Those 17 stalls backed up to the Dunkin' Donuts, and there is one single residence which has a driving in there. So again, there's plenty of parking in the neighborhood, we've looked at aerial images, we've taken counts, and, you know, my professional opinion is that you're not going to have a problem with staff parking, they're going to be utilizing the parking that's already available in the area. You know, one thing that might be concerning of the board is, you know, when you talk about staff coming to this site and there isn't existing parking demand for those that are utilizing, going to the Culinary Institute or the high school. One thing I will point out with our parking counts was that what we found is when we started our count, the parking levels stayed the same. And what that indicates to me is that at 8:30 a.m., the parking in this area is already taken up by the staff that are already working in the area. So the teachers, the staff that are associated with the schools, they're already parked. They're not going to be displaced by the staff that's coming in to utilize this facility, because this facility opens at 9:00 a.m. and that's their starting time. So when they're looking for a parking space, the staff associated with the school and the other surrounding businesses will already be in their place, so you're not really looking to displace them. It will be the doctor's staff that would need to find that parking space that may be a little bit further. So I mean, I just, you know, that's what we looked at for additional parking and expanding the parking counts and just to hopefully put this into perspective of what's happening in the area. The last item that I wanted to discuss was the sports field use. You heard the doctor speak about the sports field and, you know, what he's willing to do in the scenario that there are any issues. But, you know, when I look at it, I think it's an important thing for the board to have a level of comfort that there is an out, so to speak, if there was to be an issue. From my perspective, I don't foresee an issue. Like, you know, I looked at the schedule for the last three, well, the last two years, but I omitted the COVID year, because that was a shortened schedule, so the 2019, 2020, and then the 21 schedule, yes. So in both of those, you have five home games, one of them fell on a Thanksgiving Day, in which case the veterinary's office would be closed, so you had four home games of both those seasons. As was mentioned, if you hit the playoffs, that is, I believe it's additional two games, so that's six potential home games associated with the sports field use. And, you know, one thing I just want to remind the board is you have a field that, I believe the chairman may know what the attendance is for these games, I actually tried to figure it out myself, but I'm going to guess easily over 1,000 people that are coming to this game and they're parking. They're finding a place to park and they're getting to the game. We have 20 staff, max, worst case. And I get it, those that are coming to this game might need to walk a little bit. If the doctor's staff need to walk a little bit to get to the office, to get to work, that's what they're going to do, right? But we have the 10 parking spaces on-site to accommodate the customers that are coming to the facility, they're not going to have to walk, they're not going to have an incentive to double park in front, because they have the one-street parking. And your staff, they are going to find a parking space. What we've shown is they're going to find a parking space in a very convenient spot near them, but in this scenario, you know, for whatever reason, they need to walk a little further, that's what they're going to do. And there is plenty of parking in the neighborhood, based on what I've seen. So that's all I have to present, unless...
Okay, and the last question, and this might not be for you, it might be a callback for Dr. Tom, but I know Dr. Tom took some pictures...
Sure, yeah.
Of, I think at the last time, there was a concern about, hey, are there any pictures? Or I want to hear from people about what the parking situation is. And I think it's important, because we don't want to be disingenuous, but I think, Andy, you were very sensitive to the fact that we make sure that we tell it that the Culinary School is not in session right now.
So these were from...
And do we need to mark that into the record?
Next, please, this will be exhibit A7.
And just identify what A7 is, please.
Sure. Sure, it's a series of 18 photos taken during June of 2022.
And various days, I think, I think there's...
Yes, various days, various days in June 2022.
And various times, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Okay.
So who took these photos?
Myself and my practice manager.
Okay, we just want to make sure for the record, for identification.
And so, Dr. Tom, for the record, you can verify that those pictures actually reflect conditions which existed on those days?
Yes, we tried to go out morning, early, late morning, early afternoon, late afternoon, early night show.
A variety of times.
Because we were curious ourselves, obviously, to make sure that what we were advocating is representative.
Thank you.
So, you know, I'm just going to flip through these photos just so the board can see them. The first series of photos that you're going to see is at Memorial Drive. What you can see on the right side of each of these photos is the building in question that the applicant proposes to take over and rehabilitate and occupy. What you're seeing in front of it is the forefront of Memorial Drive. What you're going to see in all of these photos, with the exception of one landscape vehicle who's caring for the property in question, is that it's completely empty. I'm going to acknowledge I did not take these photos, but on every time that I was at the site, these photos are consistent with what I observed on Memorial Drive. So this is June 6th at 2:30, and all of these are weekdays, I'll say. So June 6th at 2:30 p.m., so June 6th at 4:00 p.m., June 7th at 12:15 p.m., June 7th at 10:30 a.m., again, you'll see Memorial Drive is empty. June 13th at 10:10 a.m., June 13th at 10:40 a.m., May 30th, this is, May 31st at 8:45 a.m., June 3rd at about 1:50 p.m. Again, what you're seeing is Memorial Drive, it's empty, with the exception of the one landscape vehicle to repair the property. The next series of photos is at Sixth Avenue, looking to the west. What you're seeing on the right-hand side are the angled parking spaces, that front of the sports field, which you can just see beyond. And on the left side, you can see the building in question that's proposed to be occupied. This is a, you know, I just want to point out, you can look at these, but again, in my experience, when the Culinary School was fully operational, these angled spaces were pretty much utilized. So you'll see some of these are empty now, but I would expect that when the Culinary School is in, that those would be occupied. On the opposite side of the angled stalls on Sixth Avenue, you'll see there's a lot of parallel parking, it appears that this curb space is available. Again, during the parking counts that we took. There was actually some of them that were available when the Culinary School was in session, but it certainly wasn't as open as you see in these photos. So again, just wanted to point that out, but so far it is worth hearing these photos. But again, whereas Memorial Drive is pretty representative, I would say these aren't generally as representative as what you might see when the Culinary School is in session.
All right, thank you, Andy. Anything else?
No.
Mr. Chairman, no further questions for the witness at this time.
Okay, do any of the board members have any questions?
My only question is, when was the first time you used that software, 2014, you said?
Our office uses it regularly.
No, I mean, I'm sorry, when was the timestamp that you used?
Oh, the, well, the dates. Looking at just the weekdays after we isolated it, the last day, the most recent was March 11th, you know, Friday, March 11th, 2022. And the oldest aerial was Monday, November 10th of 2014.
And this might not be a question for you, but do you know when that previous business closed? Do you know the year, or does...
I think it was 2013, what we, kind of, that was the email. It said that in the email from someone saying that 2013 was that.
We believe that.
All right, okay, thank you, that's all my questions.
Okay, thank you. Do the board professionals have any question of this witness?
I do have a question. Just out of curiosity, does Steiner Place, do you know, happen to know the fate of it from Steiner Place, or if...
No, I don't.
Is it in the stalls, is it in the stripe, or...
No, none of it's striped. There's a certain curb that's painted yellow to exclude that from parking, but other than that, there's no striping or anything. There's no center line or...
Is that an indication of any signage in terms of parking being permitted or not?
That's correct.
Just one question, I meant. You'd indicated in your testimony that there are 50 to 60 stalls generally available. What do you mean by that?
Sure, so, well, when we take aerial, right, you have one timestamp and one day. So what I mean by that is the range, so the minimum range over that time, so let me just...
Let me ask you this, maybe this will help. Are these spaces that are actually someone can park at, or are these spaces that are just available?
They're not utilized, so, yes.
So someone could come and park?
Yes, that's correct, yes, yeah. So what we did is we looked at the curb space, figured out how many people you could park there. And then we counted the number of vehicles that were there, and you do the subtraction to figure out how many additional could go there.
Okay.
And at that point, is there permit only on that side of the street?
I did not see any signs indicating permit only.
Residents only or permit only?
No.
Michael, is that anything that you saw in your report?
I didn't see anything about it. No permit.
Okay, do any members of the public have any questions for the witness? None whatsoever?
Okay.
Excuse us.
Thank you, Andy. Mr. Chairman, with your consent, I'd like to call Allison Coffin, our planner.
Please come forward.
Just want to swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Thank you, and if you could state your name for the record and spell it in the book as well, please.
Allison Coffin, C-O-F-F-I-N, like the box.
And Allison, your testifying is...
credentials, credentials. Can we hear your credentials, please?
Sure.
Yes, I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I'm also certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners. I've had my license and certification since 2005. In the intervening years, I've appeared as an expert witness in front of boards in more than 100 communities throughout the state, including Asbury Park.
That's good, thank you, you made the same.
Allison, obviously you're familiar with the application and the plans which have been submitted, correct?
Yes.
I believe you were present for all three hearings so far.
Yes.
Okay, I know you've had an opportunity to analyze this application from a planning, and if you could tell the board what you considered, what you analyzed, and what your thoughts and conclusions are.
Sure, to prepare for tonight, I reviewed the application materials. I've visited the site three times, I've sat through the other hearings, I've read the professional reports. I've looked at the master plan, the 2017, I believe it is, master plan reexamination report, and the ordinances. The property that we're looking at is just under, or just over half an acre, it's 22,500 square feet. It's a corner lot located at the intersection of Memorial Drive and Sixth Avenue. The site contains a single-story commercial structure that is vacant and dilapidated, but it is repairable. The applicant is proposing to renovate this existing structure and use it as a veterinary clinic, which would provide animal care services that include veterinary services, grooming, lodging or boarding, daycare, exercise classes, and training classes. The property is located in the R1 single-family residential zone, which permits only detached, single-family residences and essential municipal services. So the proposed conversion of this commercial building for use as a veterinary clinic with associated animal care services requires a D1 variance. There's some existing variance conditions on the property which are not being altered. The front yard setback to Memorial, the rear yard setback, the building coverage. But there is variance relief that is being requested for impervious coverage. By putting parking on the lot, we are increasing the impervious coverage. So variance relief is being requested for that. And there is a variance required for signage. Signs for commercial buildings are not permitted in a residential zone, so if we're going to have a commercial use with a commercial sign, that's also a variance. It's my opinion that special reasons exist for the granting of the requested variances, and the variances can be granted with no detriment to the health, safety, and general welfare. Looking first at the use variance. The general welfare in this case is advanced due to the fact that the proposed use advances the purposes of the municipal land use law, and that the site is unique in ways that make it particularly suited to the proposed use. Though it's owned residential, the subject site is developed with a commercial structure that was previously used as an auto parts store. The structure is not in great shape, but it's structurally sound, and can be renovated and occupied to be used commercially again. This existing building is not suited for a conforming residential dwelling. It has a floor area of 11,968 square feet, which is far greater than the typical home that is a lot of vacuuming for a single-family residence. This lot also provides no usable rear or side yard areas for typical residential accessory activities. So with regard to this, there is a hardship as the current zoning prohibits an appropriate use for the existing structure on the lot. The building's large floor area can accommodate the expanded veterinary clinic and other pet care services, the grooming, boarding, and daycare, all of which can be contained fully within this structure. The building's location is ideally suited to serve as the clinic's existing customer base, as it is one block from the clinic's existing location. It is also valuable use for the city overall. There is, this is the only veterinary clinic in the city at this time, and if approved, it would be the only pet boarding also available within the city. Positive reasons also exist for the granting of the requested bulk variances. The impervious coverage variance that's requested is the result of providing off-street parking to support the commercial use of the site where none currently exists. It is not possible to provide these 10 new parking spaces without exceeding the impervious coverage limit. And the variance for commercial signage in a residential zone is subsumed within that use variance request. A commercial use requires commercial signage. So if the board finds that the use of this commercial structure with a commercial use is acceptable, the commercial signage proposed follows logically from that. The requested use and bulk variances can be granted without detriment. The proposed veterinary clinic and animal care use on this site is an appropriate use for the existing commercial structure. The use in-site plan will not generate an unacceptable level of traffic, as has been testified to by our traffic expert. The combination of proposed onsite parking and the existing available street parking is adequate to support this use. This use in-site plan will not generate offensive noise or odors. All business activity will be conducted within the building, and the building has been designed to include extensive sound mitigation techniques to prevent noise, as well as odor impacts happening outside of the building. The aesthetic impact for this will be positive. The building, which is identified by your planner in his report as an example of streamlined, modern style of art deco architecture, is currently in a state of disrepair and will be fully repaired and restored, which is a positive impact to this area. And the site improvements also will include landscaping, which will have a positive aesthetic impact. The proposed variances would not substantially impair the intended purpose of your master plan and zoning ordinance. The subject site was previously developed with a commercial structure that does not comply with the zoning. But it's isolated from the nearest commercial zones by residential homes, the educational and recreational developed land, and the railroad, making this a small, isolated, commercial parcel on the north end of Memorial, which is uniquely situated and different from the remainder of the R1 zone. This structure is not likely to be used for a conforming, single-family dwelling, and the applicant is seeking to return this commercial structure to a viable use, not introduce a new commercial structure to this zone. The new bulk variance requested are necessary to renovate this structure and support the use with off-street parking, signage, screening, and new landscaping. This proposed application advances some of the goals of the master plan, specifically 5121, which is to protect and enhance the quality and enjoyment of the city's residential neighborhoods through policy and regulation that promotes quality of life and minimizes negative impact from the city's tourism and other economic development activities. The availability and the provision of medical care for the pets of the city's residents within a walkable distance and within the city's boundaries to many of those residents enhances the quality of life for the citizens of Asbury Park, whether they walk on two legs or four. And then there's 5313, which is to ensure infill development complements the context and qualities of adjacent neighborhoods with an appropriate scale, massing, and character. The proposed development here maintains the scale, massing, and character by preserving the structure. 5316 is to encourage redevelopment in appropriate locations in a manner that is compatible with the organic or historic development pattern of the city. The proposed use is located in this neighborhood and seeks only to relocate one block north. So we're keeping the veterinary clinic roughly in the same neighborhood where it already exists. And lastly, which I think is most significant for your master plan, we have a structure here that was identified in the 2006 master plan's historic preservation element, which was recalled again in the 2017 reexamination report. The structure was identified as being historically significant. The current master plan has many historic preservation goals advanced by this application, including 5127, encourage historic preservation to promote the city's history, maintain the city's unique character, protect existing historic resources, and complement economic development efforts. 5716, which is to contribute to the improvement of Asbury Park's economy by encouraging expenditures for the restoration and/or adaptive reuse of historic buildings for local purposes, and to encourage and promote tourism. 571, which is to recognize and preserve the historic character of the city. And 57113, which is to explore incentives to encourage the maintenance and proper facade restoration of historically notable buildings, and to discourage the subdivision of historic buildings, so we don't want to cut this up for multiple tenants. Then there's 5724, and that is to require preservation and adaptive reuse of historic buildings and landmarks. Amend the community design regulations, which I don't believe has been done, to require historic buildings and landmarks that are significant to Asbury Park's past to be retained. These buildings are identified in the 2006 historic preservation element, this is one of them. Retention of these buildings is important to preserving the culture and history of the city that has contributed to it being a regional destination for decades. Such buildings should be identified in the historic preservation study recommended herein, this building was. Retention should include not only retaining the building itself, but also use of preservation easements which restrict use or changes to the property that would diminish its historic significance. What we have here is a property that's not going to be used with a conforming use without removing the structure. So the greater good and the greater advancement of the master plan in this case is to allow the structure to remain, but have it be of a commercial character, and that's what the applicant is proposing. So though a use variance is required to permit the appropriate use of the structure, the renovation and adaptive reuse of this structure advances the master plan by promoting the city's history, unique character, and historic resources. It promotes the master plan's many historic preservation objectives. And again, this is extremely unlikely to happen with a permitted use. Now, I can also go through all the design exceptions, although I think our engineer did address them quite adequately.
I would agree, unless, Mr. Chairman, I think we...
There's a lot of public to talk behind me.
I noticed. Okay, I don't think that would be necessary.
Anything else, Allison?
Nope.
Mr. Chairman, I have no further questions for this witness at this time.
Okay, any questions from the board? Any questions from the professionals?
I just have a couple. You talked about the need for this use in the city, and how did you determine the need for this use?
Well, there's no other veterinary services available in the city anymore.
And if this were approved tonight, would the applicant agree to preservation easement on the building facades?
That I don't know.
Well, I'll speak to him offline.
I do have a question. I mean, for a use variance, we're not just talking about veterinarian, we're talking about grooming, we're talking about boarding. So there's a lot more than, you know, you can say that the town could use a vet practice and it's needed, which we already have. But is it really needed to have a grooming and daycare facility in an R1 zone? I'm still trying to wrap my head around that and how that can be...
There's also, there's no boarding in the city either. So it does provide boarding, and it's only to the existing veterinary customers. For somebody who has a dog with special needs, who needs to board them in a place where they have medical support, this is a use that is very important to tie it to the veterinary clinic. The grooming is also something that, there are dogs out there that don't like to be groomed, and having somebody who's better trained than you're going to get at a pet store is a valuable service.
Okay, there isn't any grooming in the city, but is it really an essential service? I mean, hospitals, schools, I don't think you could say grooming and daycare is a... I'm having a hard time seeing how this is... Is a, for a use variance, it's just, I'm trying to wrap my head around the grooming and the daycare practice.
The grooming and the daycare and the... The grooming and the daycare and the boarding is ancillary to the veterinary clinic. It's available to their customers only, so it's not a separate use, it's not a separate business. And again, providing those within the umbrella of a veterinary care practice is, it's hard to find, especially if you have an animal that has more intense medical needs.
There is grooming and boarding on 35, so it's not like it's not available anywhere around.
Yeah, I boarded my dogs last week. It's the first time I've been able to for a while, because prior to that, I had a dog that we could not board outside of veterinary care. So there's boarding available, but not boarding where there's trained veterinarian staff onsite. That makes this unique, or at least much more less common.
May I also comment?
Sure.
So even just today, we had two pets that needed grooming, and we're not a grooming facility, we have a technician who can do veterinary, and I can, you cannot touch these pets without some type of medical intervention, some type of chemical restraint for them, and you need a veterinary medical license to do that. On top of that, yes, there are other practices outside of Asbury Park that can do that as well, but we are the only aha accredited facility that has these high standards and meets that quality of care, so we do groom and groom best to do that as well.
Thank you.
So, Dr., if you brought grooming onsite.
I'm sorry.
Grooming and keeping dogs, you know, for a long period of time, no, short period of time, basically that would not add to the traffic in the neighborhood substantially, you don't feel?
Not based on the plan that we have for pickups, drop-offs. We have a plan for the flow of traffic, so that all of it can kind of work together.
Okay, Joan, okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
I don't have for the planner, I do have for Dr. Tom, but we can finish with the planner first, if you like.
General public?
Yes.
Please step to the microphone.
Just remember, this is for questions only at this point.
Yes, do I have to state my name, address?
Yes.
Christina Smith, 1119 Sunset Avenue. I came in late, so I don't know all the characters in the play here. This gentleman on the end had mentioned that if Dr. Tom was willing to preserve the aesthetics of the outside of the building, is that correct? Is that what he asked her?
Let me clarify what I asked. What I asked, Ms. Coffin testified as to the historical significance of this building and its style, and it's been recognized within plenty of documents and historic preservation documents in the city. I asked whether or not, as a condition of an approval, would the doctor agree to a preservation easement, which is common with a historic building?
Okay.
Where it just reserves the facade, protects the facade from unsympathetic modifications in the future. That's what I asked.
Okay, so then.
And they have not answered.
Right, so then there is a house next door that is completely dilapidated, that has tents outside, bicycles strewn, garbage everywhere.
No, you can't testify, you just have to ask.
So are they being asked to?
Excuse me?
Yes?
You cannot testify, you have to ask questions.
I'm getting to that.
Okay, well, you only have a certain amount of time, please.
Okay, okay, do I have three minutes?
Four.
Four, okay.
That's for comments.
Okay, so are they being asked to preserve their home as well? I believe it might be a Section 8 house, which is fine, there's nothing wrong with that. I live next to.
Hold on, hold on, it doesn't matter, because it's only this application, so we have no jurisdiction outside this property.
Well, right, so he's being asked to preserve, but nobody else is being asked to preserve, so is that?
But that is a job for code enforcement, not for us.
May I answer the question?
If you want to, you don't have to.
So this requirement that the board's planner is asking for only applies to buildings that are on the master plan's list of historically significant places. There are only 66 of them, the house next door is not, this one is. So that would be why the board can't ask every applicant who comes in, but only people who are on that list for this kind of reason.
Or they're in a certain district. Selective enforcement is what I'm calling this.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kathleen Muma, 1104 Sunset. My question is, if this property used to be an auto parts store, why is it zoned as R1 residential, and when was it zoned as R1 residential?
That has nothing to do with our testimony.
Oh, it has to do, okay.
I don't have the answer to that question, but I would presume that it's within the R1 zone, because if it wasn't, it would be like an isolated outline parcel, and the law doesn't really like that. So it's unique for the R1 zone, which is what makes it suited for this use, rather than the single-family use.
So I'll answer that, help at least with your answer quickly. So this zone was designated R1 where this property is before the application came before the board. So the board has to hear this application as an application for a use variance in an R1 zone.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have no further questions?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have no further witnesses, I do have a closing summation, but I figure we'll do that after your public comment, if that's the pleasure of the board. Oh, I'm sorry.
I just have a question, if you don't mind.
Sure, Dr. Tom.
Dr. Tom, I'd just like to speak about, just a little bit about your current employees. How long have you been in business? And you might have gone over this before, I just don't recall.
So informally, since 2015, doing house calls.
Okay, but here.
2018, we established our current location.
And how many people work here today?
We have 15.
All right, you have about 15, and you're looking to move to 20. Now, your current people, is there a lot of turnover in your business or in your practice?
In some departments, there are, and in some parts of the hospital, there's a, yes, in the veterinary industry, there's a lot of turnover right now, but I think it's consistent with what's going on in the world today.
Does moving to a larger facility give people an opportunity to move up in their titles?
100%, yes.
Because?
Because the people that I trust now, that are going to be building with me as a young entrepreneur, are going to be hopefully with me in the next 15, 20 years, to turn them into not just an assistant, but a manager, or even hire.
And because you can hire more, because you have more space, correct?
Had to.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other?
Yes, Mrs.
John Lefredo, 6th Avenue, Asbury Park. I didn't get an answer to, would the doctor be willing to preserve the art deco look of this building? Is it going to change?
I don't, I don't know, I didn't completely understand the question, but now I do, we can both preserve this, I think we already are preserving it in an appropriate manner, 100%.
So there are no major architectural changes to the outside of this building?
No.
All right, we got an answer, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions of the witnesses? Okay, we will now open up for public comment. Please keep your comment, state your name, address, and you are limited to four minutes. You can line up along the wall.
And Irene, where's the clock?
Oh, I have it here.
Okay.
So all comments are limited to four minutes per person. Please keep your comments relative to the application, and please be respectful. And after you state your name and address, Mr. Beakman will swear you in, and then I will start the clock.
Before you start, if you're in line, please don't talk, no whispering, it's very hard to pick up on the mics. No whispering, please, if you're not speaking. Thank you.
And now begin.
I'm Kathleen Muma, 1104 Sunset Avenue.
You swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I was a client of City by the Sea for a few years, until my dog Biscuit passed away last August. And words will never be able to express the gratitude that I feel for this team of compassionate, knowledgeable, responsible people and the invaluable services they provided to Biscuit and many of Asbury Park's very important pet residents. Before City by the Sea opened in Asbury Park, we had to drive to veterinarians in Red Bank, Oakhurst, Rumson, and Little Silver. And when Dr. Tom opened, not only could we take Biscuit to a top-notch care center, but we saved a lot on gas, car expenses, and time. I no longer had to request a vacation day from work just to take my dog to the vet. And going to the vet became a healthier experience for us and Biscuit, because we could walk there. I currently live just two blocks from City by the Sea's current and proposed site. I walked Biscuit there countless times, and I know for certain that many other clients in my neighborhood do the same. At the end of her life, Biscuit needed weekly treatments for several months. Sometimes I had to drive to the vet because she was too weak, but the parking for the current location is always ample, it was never once a problem. And many clients are just dropping off their pet or picking up meds, so the parking need is quite transitory. And I'd also like to add, I live by the high school, and I don't have a driveway, I have street parking only. We have two cars, street parking. So when there's prom, graduation, football games, I've never not been able to park my car. Parking in that neighborhood is not a problem. I also walk through the Sunset Plaza literally seven days a week, I utilize all the businesses there, I've never witnessed a lack of parking for myself or other people. And also, I've never smelled anything having to do with City by the Sea while I was in the office or walking around the neighborhood, and same with noise. There's no noise at the current location you can hear while outside the facility. I state emphatically that the current facility enhances the quality of life in the nearby vicinity, and I can't think of a way that the new location would hinder quality of life for those in the neighborhood. I'm a member of the City of Asbury Park's Green Team Committee, and we've recently started coastal resiliency planning. We are asking, what can we do to make Asbury Park a sustainable, resilient community where people can live a healthy, safe, happy, affordable life now and in the future? And a feature of sustainable, resilient communities is having locally owned and operated businesses that are affordable, accessible with or without a car, and provide a vital service to the community. An extra bonus points to any business that can reimagine or repurpose a dilapidated, abandoned structure that has historical features. So City by the Sea's proposal to create a state-of-the-art health center for Asbury's pet family members checks all of these boxes and then some. This proposal is not only extremely meaningful and necessary for the many pet families in Asbury Park, but a business like this is a cornerstone for Asbury Park's current and future sustainability. This application has my enthusiastic support, and I strongly encourage you to pass it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Rhian Ann Long, I live at 807 6th Avenue, Asbury Park.
Could you just spell your name, if you don't mind?
Sorry, just one second.
You swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can I use that picture over there, or can it be brought to me? Can I step away from the mic right now?
Yeah, you can come up to the picture, that's fine. Just speak loudly, put your, okay.
And just for the record, that is a seven. Thank you. Oh, okay, I'm sorry, that is a six.
All right, so I live at 807 6th Avenue, you can see me on this map. Here is the baseball field, here is the corner, there's railroad tracks, there's a house here, I'm here, that's how close I'm going to be, I'm like, right there. I look at that corner every day, I'm sick of seeing how the lot 2 is building in, it's been getting worse, I'm just fencing around it, it's falling apart. These guys are willing to invest, I'm sure, a lot of money into renovating this building. And as far as parking goes, I live right here, so I see it. This side of the street here, and this, there's barely anyone ever parking here, okay? Same thing for this street here, Steiner, that was discussed briefly, I know we're talking about mostly this, but I don't see many people parking there. I don't see how there could be a problem with parking. The current business about the way that I'm here is showing with 70 of people, have their titties, and I've always wanted a parking spot there, because I also bring my animals there. I have three cats, and a dog that currently is being viewed there, are treated there, sorry, nervous. And I would really like to see this building being used by somebody, because it's falling apart, and I live right there, I'm sick of it, I'm sick of walking by it. There's been like, in years past, pop-up parties, it's been two o'clock in the morning, the last thing they're using there. It needs to stop, it needs to be put back, I would love to see the vet that my animals see being in that building. As far as grooming and all that goes, and boarding, I currently have a cat that is needing some change fluids and all this medication. I have to think, can I go on vacation, or do I have to board my cat somewhere? I would rather have my cat medically be seen and boarded and pay money to the vet that I'm going to, so I don't have to worry about going on vacation. Um, sorry, nervous, but I really just wanted to go on the parking, because I do live here and I do see what is going on, and I really would love to see this really be repurposed and be able to be used by us all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Caitlin Sheridan, I live at 200 D Lake Drive, and I'm here on behalf of Catsbury Park today. I'm going to get a little emotional, we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, we rely on Dr. Tom and his crew.
Wait a minute.
I'm sorry.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to provide? The truth, the whole truth?
I do.
We have to have it on the record.
I'm so sorry, yes, get it on the record, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that bought me a little emotional stability. So we rely on Dr. Tom and his crew, I can't even explain to you. I have over 90 cats and kittens in foster in my care right now, they are all clients of Dr. Tom's. None of those animals would be alive if that facility did not exist right there. And to piggyback on why boarding, why grooming is necessary, where we are located right now, we are right on Memorial and 3rd Ave, we are a stone's throw away from this clinic. When someone drops off a 15-year-old diabetic cat to me that has not been groomed, hasn't been able to clean himself in years, that cat needs to be medically sedated to be groomed, to give him a chance again, they have to be able to see a veterinary doctor, not go to fuzzy paws on 35 and get a shave down. It's a completely different thing. And they are just so important to us as a rescue, as another Asbury Park facility, we need them, and we cannot do what we do without them. So approving this and having this a part of our town, letting that expand, is crucial to the rescue world, and without them, we can't do it. So the more lives we can save, the more lives they can save, and vice versa, so I really, really, really do urge you to look this over, to really think about what it can do, not only for Asbury and their pet owners, for our resident animals, but for the rescue world. We need this expansion just as much as they do. So I appreciate your time today, thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Alexandra Dunn, Eton Town, New Jersey, formerly of 6th and Main, Asbury Park.
Swear or affirm in your testimony that you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
So I basically have three points for everyone here, specifically the board. First, you are self-serving, the third is a bit more altruistic for the city at large. I have a six-year-old son who has partially verbal autism, amongst some other things, he has a dog that he uses for service and therapy, goes everywhere with us. The question came about boarding and grooming. I can tell you that when we go to City by the Sea vet, there's implicit trust in him that he understands that his dog is in good hands, his dog will be taken care of. The staff take their time, they explain things to him, and he's able to relax. Anytime that dog has to go somewhere else, if he's mad, it needs to be a haircut, if we have to board him, the setback for him is weeks in duration. And I don't mean like he's a little confused, or he's a little upset, it means his toilet training goes out the window, and we're now taking care of him hygienically. It means he'll stop eating, it means he stops eating at night. Having a facility where he's able to receive veterinary care for his dog, as well as having it boarded and groomed, where we have one ecosystem that we're invested in, helps him and helps him realize his potential later on in life. The second one is, is my professional career comes from fire rescues, a firefighter, paramedic. I see buildings like the one being in question, and honestly, it scares me. Those types of buildings sit dilapidated, they can be vandalized by people, and if there's a fire or an emergency medical incident in there, we go in, we're going in blind. I happened to work with three firefighters in the city of Baltimore before we left Maryland that were killed in a structure that was vacant and abandoned, had been cut up. I see a business that wants to go rehabilitate a building that has aesthetic purpose in a neighborhood and rejuvenates it. I look at it as a safety issue, not only for I look at it as a safety issue not only for the neighborhood at large due to crime, but for my brothers and sisters in the fire service. And finally, altruistically for the city, I come from a family of four, three generations of Asbury Park residents. Six of them graduated through the Asbury Park School System. I remember being here in the eighties and nineties, walking down Sunset Avenue to the boardwalk when Bubble Land was still around. I remember all the halfway houses, all the abandoned structures. I remember people passed out intoxicated on the street, urinating on the street, how completely rundown and empty the boardwalk was. And seeing the revitalization of the city, honestly, it makes me happy. It reminds me of the stories my uncles and fathers told me of growing up here in the fifties, sixties, before the late sixties occurred. I see absolutely no reason why you would want to impede that revitalization in a neighborhood. It maintains positive flow, it maintains momentum, and it helps the city revitalize itself that has spent so many years without traction to rebirth itself. We now finally have a way forward. We have a business that's willing to invest in the city and help beautify it. To me, it's a no-brainer to approve what they're looking to do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Lambden. I live at 905 Sunset Avenue.
Ms. Lambden, do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Ooh, everybody said already a lot of the things I wanted to say. So I just want to emphasize, as a client, the respect and the amazing gift it has been to myself to have Dr. Tom and his staff in the neighborhood. The kindness, the empathy, the consideration is not only for me as a client, but as a neighbor. I live right across the street from where they are right now. I'm in that area all the time. Chiropractor, Carla Giszi, you know, Busker Do. I've never heard an unkind word uttered about or complain about this business. And trust me, everybody over there likes to chit-chat. So you would hear it if there was something to be said. They are providing the service to people who are often handling one of the most difficult and emotional situations they could find themselves in. I should know because my dog actually died while he was at the vet, and no fault of them. They were there as a gift to me, and they took care of me in a way that I can't imagine. Similar to what Kathleen was saying, if I having to drive him, take days off of work when he was sick and going through what he was going through, it would have been such a disruption to my quality of life. And we live in a town with so many pet owners. It's one of the things that draws people here. I mean, we are known for things like yappy hour and the dog beach. So it is very much an identity, part of the identity of Asbury Park, and in alignment with, I think, who we are. As a neighbor, I just wanted to say, I can't understand, again, what a gift that they wanted to take this building and make it into something that can serve so many people. And that we would have people that are investing their time and money that are of like, the most highest caliber you can imagine. Like, this is like winning the lottery and saying, no, we're gonna throw it back, we might win a little bit more, you know? Like, I just, it's so beyond me. It's unfathomable that we're even questioning this. I literally, where I live, I stare at that building. It's in my backyard. There's literally like a tiny fence between me and that building. So if anyone should be worried about noise or smell, it should be me. It is in my backyard. I am not worried about it. I trust the responsiveness of these folks. I understand, you know, as a pet owner, having been in and out of different grooming situations, boarding situations, that that is not by essence what's gonna happen. I mean, we live with the train. If we're gonna worry about noise, that is already there for us. We've learned to live with that. And again, just to reiterate what everybody's saying, I mean, I've been there since 2016. This has been boarded up. It is a blight. It is dangerous. It is an absolute magnet for litter and trash, and it's just, it's horrible. Again, I can't believe that somebody actually wants to come in and make it a vibrant part of the city. Again, I will reiterate, I am an avid walker, runner. I am all around that neighborhood all the time. I walk all the time. I have never seen someone circling around, looking for parking. Even at Pride's, see here now, like, it's just, it's never been, I never see it. It's not an issue. So just in short, I just, I can't imagine why we wouldn't welcome a constructive use of space that adds value to the community, helps myself, other neighbors, expands much-needed services, and aligns with the spirit of the community. I full-heartedly support this application. And also, we are never gonna get residential use of that building. I mean, that's just not gonna happen. And if you wanna worry about parking, let's worry about what's gonna happen if you have two cars, three cars of people living in those apartments and need to park their car all day and night. So, thank you. Please, let's not lose this beautiful gift we're being offered.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's what I wanted to hear from you.
Hello. I am a resident of 1119 Sunset Avenue.
Name of your name, please?
Emma Smith.
Ms. Smith, do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
So I don't have as many credentials as some of the people sitting in this room, like, the planners, but I am a future doctor of veterinary medicine. So I just wanted to speak a little bit about that. And to start off, I would like to read the mission statement from City by the Sea. And they quote, "Our mission is to provide compassionate care and quality medicine to the pets that come through the door and their accompanying family members. We treat everyone, walking on two legs or four, with respect and the sensitivity they deserve. We strive to promote healthier pet care and to educate pet parents." So I've known Dr. Tom and his crew pretty much since the start, since his time here in Asbury. And he's a man that really kept the faith in me since I've started this veterinary journey. I was kind of on the border. He was always there telling me the truths, the goods and the bads of everything about this profession. And for one thing, this is a profession that has knocked down the vital essence for mental health for the people involved years and years before. But I can safely say that Dr. Tom, Karen, everyone else on the team, you guys really found a way to bring the love to this city and to this profession, which is really special. You really did build something incredible here so far. And I can safely assure you guys that there is nothing but compassion, empathy, and smiles behind the doors of this veterinary clinic. Not only do I feel safe entering into this crazy medicine world because of Dr. Tom, but I know every single being that enters those doors also have mutual feelings. And then as for the grooming aspect, to give one specific example of how important grooming is in tie with veterinary medicine, my dog requires sedation to get his nails trimmed, to get the deep mats in his fur. And without those, it would put everyone around him at risk. Any other regular grooming facility, they send him home. If your animal isn't handleable, they send him home. Dr. Tom doesn't send Kai home. Dr. Tom safely sedates my animal with his techs, and they get the job done safely, which is something, something very unique. And as a city, we should really be encouraging this growth and embracing this opportunity to build more trust, more traction, and a true safe haven for every soul here near the heart of Asbury Park. So let's not let parking or paint prevent something this special that we are given the opportunity to have among us. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Kendall Walton. I live on Pine Street here in Asbury Park.
You swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yep, I'm sure. Okay, I moved to Asbury, I just wrote this. I moved to Asbury Park in 2017, and a critical component of moving to this community is because it's a dog-friendly City by the Sea. One of the very first things we did when we moved here was to rescue a dog, which has greatly improved our quality of life. Initially, we went for vet care in Oakhurst, but when we heard that there would be a locally-owned vet going into the space on Memorial, we promptly changed vets. I met Tom, I think, at Busker Do a thousand times before the vet even opened up on Memorial and got to know him, and he got to know our dog. We wholeheartedly supported Dr. Tom moving to the space, at the shops at Sunset, and I'm here in support of them moving to the space on Sixth Avenue. As many of my neighbors who are here can attest, my dog Fenway is an anxious, special dog. Tom and Karen and the team at City by the Sea are unparalleled in the care of him. Speaking to the additional grooming, I would shudder to imagine bringing Fenway for a nail trim on Route Thirty-five. He requires massive doses of trazodone to make it through the door, but they make that happen. I would also speak to, for a friend of mine who is not here, I remember her telling me a story that she didn't even go to City by the Sea, and she had a pet emergency, and Dr. Tom, it was off-hours, took time out of his schedule. There was a question of whether that dog was gonna have to be put down, and he left his home. I don't know where you live, but he left his home to take care of that dog that wasn't even his patient. And Fenway's only five years old, but I can't imagine moving from this community because I'm going to need Dr. Tom and Karen when the time comes for me to put Fenway down. I cannot imagine putting my trust and care of our family member in anybody else's hands. And I feel like a lot of what other people said with the space, I, we do that walk Pine Street, past Busker Do, get a coffee, go to Cryo, go to the vet, go to Carla's. I mean, it's like, that's a hamster wheel for us. And sometimes, our dog brings us by that building, and it would be a pure joy to be able to have a space big enough to grow that. It's locally-owned business, and I just wholeheartedly support it.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Mimi Jen, 807 Sixth Avenue.
You swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
I lived in the same house for about fifteen years, and I go to that deaplet, you know, that abandoned building, time and time again, because I have a dog. And we walk all different streets, and that place is very, it's so ugly. Everyone knows about it, how bad it looks. I've seen a car tire abandoned on that street there. I've seen broken beer glasses, where I came and walked my dog, or actually picked up litter from time to time, so that he won't get hurt. Just a couple of days ago, as I was walking my dog there, I saw a whole sheet of, like, aluminum pancetta barbecue wings in the garbage can. Like, who does this? And I'm saying, I'm not blaming anyone who's doing it, but I'm saying, it's, you have that building, and it's so ugly, so it's like, well, let's just trash it more so. I've seen cars, like, the driver there just stopped, and there might be some type of transaction going by. I'm not saying it's drugs or not. I have no evidence of that, but it's every other day. And I'm like, where are the cops? Where's, what's going on here? Where is the community in this? So if it's gonna go down, it's gonna go down fast, if it hasn't yet. And, you know, I'm a client of Dr. Tom. He's taking care of my three cats and my dog, Brandon Spoke. She's my fiancee there. And we believe in him, we trust in him, and I'm glad. When we heard that he is going to beautify this place, we're like, holy cow, this is like, you know, someone said the lottery. I've been waiting for this moment. We live just two houses away, and in our window, we can see what's going on. We've seen, as she said, clubbing at nighttime, where we had a call, you know, 911 and say, oh my God, what's with this music? There were gunshots there, where a place, where this building supposedly abandoned? How is this done? And now, he's doing the right way, the legal way, and it's like, well, let's not give it to him. Yeah, I don't get that. I do have some time. I did recommend my neighbor Emily, who lives in 807 Sixth Avenue. She has a letter that I'd like to read. It's sealed.
Ma'am.
Can I do that?
You can't read a letter from another person. You can only testify for yourself.
Can I give this to you, or that doesn't matter?
No.
Oh, okay.
If she's not here, we can't accept it.
Okay. Well, she tried. Go that way.
Sorry.
Hi, Joanne Treza, Seventeen Hendrickson Place, West Long Branch, New Jersey. I'm not an Asbury Park resident, but I would like to speak on behalf of City by the Sea and Dr. Tom. We have-
Ms. Treza, if you can.
I swear.
You solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Am I marrying you? I do. We have two elderly dogs, and we've taken them to a veterinarian in Long Branch and Oakhurst for many years. And we were so excited because we heard so much about Dr. Tom when he was going to be opening up, that we were texting him probably almost every day, when are you gonna open? When are you gonna open? And we were probably one of his early customers or clients. And our dogs at the time were seven and six, and one now is fifteen, and one just turned fourteen. So he's been amazing. The compassion, the cleanliness, the professionalism that he and his staff display to clients and people in general, just as human beings, is second to none. And I've had pets for over forty, fifty years. I would also like to say, you know, the place is clean. Talk about parking. I mean, where he is now isn't the best of parking, so, you know, we've never had a problem there. But that abandoned building, when you make that left onto that road on the right-hand side, it's just, it's deplorable. And we have someone here that's willing to invest a lot of money, and he's accepted into the community. He's done a great job, you know, for not-for-profit, helping other organizations within the town of Asbury Park, the city of Asbury Park. This, to me, is a no-brainer. I say vote yes, and let him do what he needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shari Isle, Seventeen Hendrickson Place, West Long Branch, New Jersey.
You said Isen?
Isle, E-I-S-E-L-E.
You solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
I'm here to support the move to, and also to have this board approve this use variance for Dr. Tom and City by the Sea. I have two pets who have been seeing Dr. Tom for several years now. He's an amazing vet. He's grown his practice from a single vet to several vets within there. All of his staff members are wonderful. I mean, they treat you, when he was a single vet and he had limited resources, he treats you the same now, whether he's a larger-sized vet. He always gives you that personal care. He always makes you feel more than welcome. He makes you feel as if your pet is the only one. He's going here for a use variance. He has a thriving business. He's trying to make a difference, to improve the community, to improve his facility, to make a betterment for this community. And it's a betterment for himself, for the, for pet owners, as well as, as well as the community, as well as nonprofit organizations as well. It really is a no-brainer why you wouldn't want to approve somebody who's, he's moving right down the street. He's taking his thriving business and trying to conquer a business, a facility that's rundown. I mean, for the use variance, he fits, he's checked all the boxes, as somebody had mentioned earlier. He does check all the boxes. He's gonna improve it and put parking on-site, and that's why he's asking for a variance on certain issues, because he needs to put parking. He wants to do it the right way and add additional parking, so it's not all off-street. So I mean, to have somebody who wants to come in and to better the community, better the area, and to improve his business, he's a local, he's a local business owner, and he resides in the town himself. So he has a vested interest in Asbury Park. So I would vote that this board would see that he should be permitted to obtain this use variance and to grant him the approval to move on. He's a trustworthy individual. His staff is second to none, and he takes care of all the pet owners and their family members as well. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Peter Karamitas. It's 1211 First Ave, Asbury.
Can you spell your last name, please?
Okay. It's K-A-R-A-M-I-T-A-S.
Thank you. And you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Yep, so I work in Sunset Plaza, where Dr. Tom's practice is currently, and I can personally attest that there is no smell, no odor, no noise. I'm there sixty-plus hours a week. So, and then his staff and his crew are the cleanliness out of all of us. I worked at the local 130 Fish Market, and I, hands-down, made a bigger stench than him all of my time, without a doubt. No way not. And now I work at the galley full-time, and we just grill burgers and fry chicken all day. So we definitely make a bigger stench than Dr. Tom. Secondly, I had a coincidental conversation with a former zoning board member this afternoon,[1775.83] and I live on the west, on the other side of the tracks. And then basically what was said that the only thing that really gets approved based on parking is like, is either it's by the boardwalk or downtown. So I'm asking to give a little bit of love to this side of the tracks. You know, let's make it a little bit more prettier than it is already. I've lived here about three years, four years, and that building is a dump. Every time I drive past it, going to the beach, going to surf, going to bring my dogs to the beach, I drive past it, it's a dump. It needs to be changed. If a guy's willing to take a risk, let him. If there's no parking and if his clients don't want to go there, that's his risk. He may lose business, he may gain business. I don't know, but let him do it. What's the big deal? That's all I got to say. I'm out.
Good luck.
Hi, my name's Carla Gizzi. I live at 924 Sunset Ave.
You swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Hi. So I am a neighbor and also a client with my dog Bocchi, who has a love-hate with these guys because she's, she is very afraid, but she loves it there. She, they have done nothing but provide kindness to her at any visit or anytime we're on the streets, anywhere where. But most importantly, I'm a business owner in Sunset Point with Dr. Tom and his staff and they have been wonderful neighbors to all of us. No smells, the only smells, as Pete had said, are food. So I smell garlic in the morning from Ada and fish next door, but there are no dog smells, cat smells, nothing of the like. It's extremely clean. That's first, but one thing I can attest as a business owner there is that they bring the community to that neighborhood. So people are walking their dogs and coming to visit. I have clients that come to my store and patronize me while they're waiting for their dogs. So they not only have their own business, but they are now providing business to all of our neighboring businesses. So people come in, they might be waiting for their animal at a checkup. During COVID, they weren't allowed in, they would come to our stores and shop. They would get lunch at the galley, lunch at Ada's, buy fish, get a coffee. All the staff tells people, why don't you enjoy your time? You know, go to Carla's, maybe shop a little bit, you know, take your mind off of it. And we all do well because of them. So they are providing a lot of income into all the residents, the businesses, excuse me, in town. And in turn, we send them into town in the boardwalk or into downtown. They go for lunch, they spend the day, they've never been to Asbury, now they're in Asbury because of Dr. Tom. So why would we want, I used to go to Oakhurst, I've been to Garden State, why would we want to give the money that goes to this town to other towns? So to me, it doesn't make sense for Asbury to not have them. So, and as a neighbor on Sunset, the house, the building is disgusting. I walk by it with my dog Sketchy. Very unfortunate that that's a representation. Recently at a Little League or Little League event, all these small children, and I'm staring at that building and all the people that come from other towns look at that building. Not what we want to represent as homeowners in Asbury Park. And that's it. So to me, it's an A-plus win. So thank you.
Hi, my name is Erin Gorman. I actually live in Barnegat, New Jersey, so I'm not a resident. I swear that everything is true.
You swear that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I swear.
Thank you.
I drive 45 minutes to see Dr. Tom and all the staff at City by the Sea and I will drive four hours if I have to to see Tom at City by the Sea. I have two dogs. One of them is a deaf-blind old pit bull who will go out of her way to make sure she visits the vet at least once a month. And every time we go to the vet, it's not just a trip to the vet, it's a trip to Asbury Park. We, you know, go to the vet and then we get coffee at Buskerdo. We might get pizza at the galley and then we walk around town, we go shopping. It's a whole day. So not only is it money for Tom, it's money for the whole town. And I'm sure I am not the only one that does that. So personally, he's kept my dogs alive, he's kept them happy. To be able to board my dogs at Dr. Tom, if he expanded his facility, would be the first time I could go on vacation in years. There's nowhere that provides the care that City by the Sea does, anywhere by me up here. I wouldn't trust anyone else with them. And then just as a logistical, logical standpoint, like everybody said, why not? It's a building that's falling down, being put to no use, and they'll invest so much money, not only for the business, but for the community. You know, this isn't going to only help Dr. Tom and his patients, this is going to help Catsbury Park. Every time you're in there, they have a, you know, bucket to raise money for, whether it's Catsbury Park or other local charities, it's, every single resident of Asbury Park, human, animal, is going to benefit. I just, I can't see a reason why, why you want to do it. I mean, whether Tom builds here, whether he builds in Tennessee, we're going with them. But it just seems like a, a no-brainer to keep him here, let him expand and continue to grow his business here. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Bill Rosenblatt, 1211 Allenhurst Avenue in Ocean.
Mr. Rosenblatt, you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. Couple of quick things. Number one, as I was talking to John Lefredo, it's hard for me to imagine us having this discussion in 1990 when we were trying to see what we could do about redeveloping Asbury Park. Secondly, there are other things that we've had to have similar battles to which have become marketing things for Asbury Park. It took me three years to create a surfing beach in Asbury Park and now it's used for advertisement, brings money, brings people, brings goodwill to Asbury Park. I've known Tom since he started. I bring my dog here, I wouldn't go anywhere else. And let's not continue to have to drag people into the next future of Asbury Park. We have a rundown building. As Kathleen said, it ticks every box for what the development plan should look like and there's no reason that I see where a variance should not be granted. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, my name is Tricia Habert, H-A-B-E-R-T. I live in Point Pleasant, so I'm not a resident of Asbury Park, but I followed Dr. Tom from prior-
For the record, you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do, swear.
Thank you.
I met Dr. Tom at a prior practice that he worked for in my town and now I drive to Asbury Park from Point Pleasant to have my dogs treated and they literally dragged me into the building when we got there. I second everybody's sentiments about how awesome the practice is. My dog was mauled by, my little dog was mauled by a mastiff pit bull mix and I was injured. My dog survived, but I would not have wanted anyone else to care for my dog and the treatment and the compassion that we received was unmatched anywhere. I would welcome the expansion of the services. I think, like everyone else has said, that all the boxes are ticked. I think they meet all the criteria for the variances that they've applied for. And I think if, if we were sitting here and listening to, to competing applicants and the other one was an auto parts store, I think we know where the sentiment in the town would be as far as who should get the variances and operate the business. So I'm fully in support. I always come to Asbury with my dogs to patronize the practice and also to patronize the other businesses while we're here. I know that Dr. Tom is drawing people from other towns in and they are patronizing the other businesses and I do believe that this application would further the master plan of Asbury Park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Dominic King. I live on Fourth Avenue in Asbury Park.
Mr. King, you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do, yes, yes. I just want to echo what everyone else has said here tonight. This facility is hands down the best veterinary facility I've ever been to. I've had pets for about almost 30 years now. I've been to so many, from Manhattan down here to the surrounding area. My, my one dog that I have now, Stella, she drags me there every day, on foot. We walk, even if we lived on First Avenue, not Fourth, or when we lived on, between Second and Third, she will drag me there every day, even if it's 90 degrees out and I have to keep, walk her very slowly. These guys are hands down the best facility I've ever been to. Unfortunately, a few weeks ago, I had to take her to the ER and I had to take her to another facility. It's literally like night and day, the reception you get, the care you get, the, it's, I can't even explain it. And the fact that they would want to expand, which is, they have been quite a small facility now, to expand it and include, you know, not only, you know, the overnight care and, and the, expand on their, their services is so exciting for me. I've, I'm another one who has not got to travel as much as I'd like to in the last five years, having an older dog. I would literally, I would drop her off there in a heartbeat because I know that she is under such good care. Every single one of them runs out to see her when she comes. She's treated like a queen. I, I, I'm just, I really hope that you will approve this because it's, it's a no-brainer to me. And thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Hello.
My name is Catherine Abate. I live at 510 Deal Lake Drive.
You swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Well, to be redundant and I'd like to reiterate everything that's already been said, the excellent services. I'm proud to count myself as among one of the first to go to Dr. Tom with my three kitties. Part of the reason that I was so excited about City by the Sea is because there was no other facility in Asbury Park. And quite frankly, having checked some other veterinary services in the area, I found them to be lacking in many things. Professionalism, the care that they gave to my animals, the care that they gave to me as a pet owner. I live in the area, I am up and down Memorial Drive, that is my way to and from home. I make that right turn from Memorial to get to Main Street to go to Deal Lake Drive. And I truthfully do not understand what the objection would be to cleaning up that corner. I think Dr. Tom would just, it would be fabulous, it would be beautiful to bring that building back to its glory. It is currently unsightly and it just gives the whole area a derelict impression. I just want to reiterate that for myself, I have three kitties, one of whom I called my special needs cat and probably have been at City by the Sea on average, once a month for the last several years. Most recently, I myself had a medical issue and my Harry got sick. So while I've had a personal phone number for one of the staff members, I rarely use it, I don't think that's fair. This time I used it. And to reiterate the admission statement, when I called and I got the call back and I said, my Harry's sick, but I can't do anything because I can't drive, I'm sick and I don't know what to do and I have nobody to help me. And you know what the answer was? What's the problem? We'll come pick him up and then we'll bring him back. So I wouldn't do that, I wouldn't trust anybody with my family member because my Harry's my family member. And yet I would do that at City by the Sea, I would do that with Dr. Tom. And it is such a vital service that they bring to this community, over and above anything else that you could possibly imagine. Because they do take care of our animals, but they take care of us and they are vital, vital business to the whole area. So I implore you, please think about this very hard and please approve this application. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, Christina Smith, 1119 Sunset Avenue.
You swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes. So I, we speak from emotion because we're dedicated to Dr. Tom and his staff's compassion and credentials. My daughter spoke from passion to the project, becoming a future veterinarian. We, I, I, I have, I'm involved in so many things in Asbury Park, one of them is Catsbury, one of them is the SPCA. So I will literally go to, walk to the SPCA, pick up my foster kittens, walk over to Dr. Tom, they take care of them, then I bring them back, then I take, go walk home, get my dog, go over to Dr. Tom for his checkup. You know, then I go back, I pick up the kittens, I just go in this circle constantly. So the need, the need for this facility is enormous. This is, this is one thing that is not in question. We all know that, you know that, if you're a pet owner, you know that. We don't want to take our money elsewhere. We don't want to drive anywhere. We want to walk to Dr. Tom. And now kind of switching gears, besides the whole Catsbury thing and, you know, Dr. Tom and the compassion and everything else. My husband coaches Little League across the street from that building and Carla brought that up. And by the way, Carla's dog Bocchi, I think wins the prize for frequenting Dr. Tom's office most. So anyway, when I am there, those kids see that building. They see they don't have a future. They need to see, especially in Asbury Park, they need to look at that and go, wow, I can grow up here, I can go to school here. We live next to a burned-down home. So the kids that enter the high school have to pass by the burned-down home, the kids that enter the high school from that building have to pass by that dilapidated building. They need to know they have a future here in Asbury Park. And if they see that we are making something nice, they understand, wow, I do have a future. I, maybe I will go to high school, then maybe I will go to the VOTAC, maybe I can go to college. We're not giving them that opportunity. All we're showing them is dilapidated buildings on one entry to the school and the other entry to the school. So those 106 kids that we now have registered for Little League, they look at that and they look at the house next door to it and they go, well, what do I have to try for? What is the point in trying if this is my future? And we have a dog that walks by that property. There's stories out there, there's memes on the internet about veterinarians saying to the pet owner, just tell me what they really ate. If it was marijuana, we just need to know so we can help your animal properly. If it was a gummy, we just need to know. Our dog ingested something, most likely on that property and had to go to emergency services outside of Dr. Tom. We don't want to do that anymore, okay? We have the ability right here in Asbury Park and there are hundreds of us as animal owners. So let's think about the future of our children and the need for this facility. There's no question here to pass this. Can we make a vote now? Can everybody just say? I do?
But was that too many?
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Okay. Does anybody have anything else to say?
No.
No, you went once.
Only one person at a time, only one person. And we do have a meeting at 7:00 PM, so we do have to kick everyone out of here at 7:00 PM. Just keep that in mind.
Mr. Chairman, I just have very few closing remarks.
Well, we have one more person.
Oh, I'm sorry.
One more taxpayer.
Hi, Sonia O'Brien. I live at 1104 Fifth Avenue here in Asbury.
Ms. O'Brien, you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
My husband and I moved here 20 years ago, so we have seen a lot of changes. And we have three pets. When we heard that Dr. Tom and City by the Sea Vet was coming to town, we were elated because we don't want to drive out of town. We don't want to go to 35 to the national stores and the national vets. We wanted to go to a family-owned place when, and everybody has said it, but when we've gone in with our animals, we get the care, our animals get the care and the love. And the fact that they would have, which is so hand and glove, that you would have a grooming and a boarding facility all connected, you've heard everybody here talk about it and anybody that has pets knows that that is really crucial to have all of those under one roof. And something that a lot didn't touch on because we were talking on other things, is just reiterating what this facility and what Dr. Tom and City by the Sea Vet has done for the local community, for Catsbury, for the Little League, for the football. And also, he's a great employer in town. You heard him, who gives full medical now? That's a lot of money, you know, so his heart is- So his heart is in it, his passion. He's got 15 employees now. He's talking about increasing that to 20. That's a job creator here in town. And lastly, to deal with the parking issue, my husband and I walked to, we're two blocks away from this facility, and anybody in town knows it, it's a very dog and cat-centric community. We love our animals like our family members. So I think, obviously, lastly, fixing this dilapidated building that I have walked by and seen for 20 years, it's like one of the last vestiges of Asbury Park. Everybody else, the train has left the station, why do we leave this building like this? And if they're going to restore it to the Art Deco history that it has, even better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else? Thank you, and I thank all of you for your comments. I have now met five of Dr. Tom's patients, Harry, Fenway, Stella, Sketchy, and Bachi. Thank you. And I hope that Fenway is not a vet sop fan, okay? Okay, board members, we may now...
She was closing remarks.
Okay, you're closing remarks.
Sure. Real briefly, and I'm going to speed read this in the interest of time. So thank you very much for taking your time. As I indicated, I appreciate the patience and the thoughtfulness and the thoroughness which you all brought to this, and truthfully, I expected nothing less. We have come before you with a significant amount of testimony, and I appreciate the public comments tonight. We believe that we've presented sufficient evidence. And just real briefly, obviously, Dr. Tom is just an awesome person, is an awesome vet, and is a quality practice here in town. It's an established practice here in town, established reputation in the city. In fact, that established reputation has come back and hurt us, I think, because we had so many recusals from the board. But he's been a great ambassador to this town. I think you have had opportunity, some of you, to do a site inspection. Dr. Tom's been a wonderful ambassador to this town. He's been a wonderful businessman for this town, and his practice has been wonderful, and that's not going to change. We also, we're talking about the existing building. This building exists. It's not going anywhere. And I think life would be difficult or different if we were coming to you and say, "Hey, we're going to knock down the existing building and we're going to build something new. We're going to start from scratch." I think in that situation, you all could say and would say and should say, "Hey, why don't you comply with everything? You have that opportunity." But here, we are retrofitting an existing building. We're making an adaptive reuse, I think a lot of the public said tonight, repurposing. And it is a tough job. I mean, loss in everything is, that is a tough job to make an adaptive reuse of a building. It's tough from an architectural standpoint, it's tough from a practical standpoint, it's tough from a functional standpoint, and Dr. Tom will tell you, it's tough from a financial standpoint. But the applicant tonight stands behind you, before you, and he's willing and committed to returning this to productive use. Obviously, we have a use variance relief and we're aware of those standards. And our team has indicated that, under the circumstances, we don't think that that site is really going to be used for single-family use. The prior use was, I think, the Michael's report made reference to an auto parts, and I think I was told that it was a plumbing supply store. We think, particularly with all the bells and whistles we are proposing, that this is a more benign use. Now, we also, Alison Coffin testified about the positive and negative criteria, and the negative criteria talks about, can this application be granted without causing substantial detriment to the public good? And I just want to take a few seconds to talk about that because I think, and I hope that you agree, we satisfied that. We talked about no adverse noises. I think there were some board members who had an opportunity to go visit the site. But also, we had the acoustical engineer testify, and he talked about all the bells and whistles that we had. We had the noisier rooms relocated to inside, we had special windows, we had the walls in front of the fake windows, we had the special kind of upgraded ceiling tiles, and all designed, and I think the acoustical engineer said, "You don't need all this. This is overkill." And Dr. Tom said, "No, no, no, we do want that." We also had testimony that there'll be no adverse light impact and no adverse traffic and no adverse parking impact. And I think at the last meeting, some of the board members said, "Look, you know, we know the importance of traffic counts, but that's not all we want to see. We want to hear, we want to see pictures, and we want to hear from people who have lived here for 20 years." And hopefully, we address some of that tonight. We've had talk about the operational details, certainly the positive aesthetic impact, and there's nothing here that's going to make this thing stand out like a sore thumb in a bad way. I also think that the law talks about, we should have to prove that there's no substantial detriment to the public good. It doesn't say no detriment, it says no substantial detriment. And of course, there's always going to be change, and there's always going to be some growing pains, but I think we've really done enough to address this. Certainly, the aesthetic improvements are, I think, I don't even have to comment on that because the site is old, it stagnates, it's not aesthetically pleasing, and there was a lot of testimony about that. Also, there was some testimony tonight from some of the public that existence of that old dilapidated building has a detrimental impact on people's psyche. So with this approval, Dr. Tom will be on site, his people will be on site, his employees are going to be on site, it's going to be properly enhanced and properly maintained and properly operated. And we think that's a good thing, not just for the site, but for the neighborhood and the community. Obviously, there's benefit to restoring the property, to its productive use on the tax rolls, that's a good thing. And as testified by our planner, we live in a world today that's sort of a, let's demolish it and build new society, and sometimes that's a good thing and sometimes it's not such a good thing. And here, there's value in keeping architecturally significant buildings alive and keeping them intact. It's sometimes expensive and it's sometimes challenging, but that's what he's willing to do. And I know the doctor had indicated that, yes, we would agree to a preservation easement. And the only thing that I would want to do is just subject to the reasonable review of the agreement because obviously, the devil's in the details. I'd want to make sure that the agreement wouldn't prevent the building that he's proposing or any other thing significant. But he would work that out with the city attorney and/or his real estate attorney. But we definitely have no problem with that. Also, I think it's important that we've agreed to a lot of conditions that you all have rightly suggested or rightly imposed or suggested that we impose. And I think those conditions mitigate some of the potentially, you know, otherwise concerns that you might have. So some of those conditions, well, related to noise. Now, actually, we've already done that. We've made those planned revisions. And we've also, we talked about the football. Dr. Tom loves Blue Bishop football, so we're not going to interfere. He doesn't want to do anything. We've talked about that condition. We've talked about, internship is not even a condition. He's testified, he's already doing that, and I think that's a great thing. We talked about, I think there was a request to move the garbage to the other side of the driveway, which we've agreed to. There was a, Mr. Sullivan had a request about creating a gap between the bicycle rack pad and the new flank wall. All these conditions, we think, make a great proposal even greater. And I know there was a comment about, hey, there's a lot of variances, a lot of design waivers. And I would just say, I don't think it's important, well, in the context of the existing building, it's not that relevant per se. And I would also say that it's not so much the number of variances or the number of design waivers, but it's the impact that those variances and design waivers have. And last but not least, my client is a wonderful and great guy. He's an awesome and successful veterinarian. And I recognize that we do not grant use variances because someone is nice. I know that. Likewise, we don't deny variances because someone is not so nice. As you know, you vote based upon the testimony and evidence presented, knowing that the approval runs with the land. As indicated, all of the facts presented justify approval, at least in my opinion, and I hope yours as well. The only reason I'm bringing this up is because on many other applications, you all have to sort of make an educated guess about, well, what is this application really about? And you sort of have to, you know, saying to yourself, well, what is this place going to look like? How's it really going to operate? And what is going to be the overall impact? And here tonight, fortunately, we don't have, we have some positive factors on our side which can sort of remove some of those risks. A, we know what the building looks like now, and we know what it's going to be restored and how it's going to be enhanced. We know Dr. Tom, he has a local established practice a mere one and a half blocks away. He operates right down the street. Granted, this new site is going to offer more services, but the existing site, we still know it's going to be Dr. Tom's practice. It's going to be his employees, it's going to be his clients, it's going to be his operational parameters, it's going to be his commitment, it's going to be his aha certification that's expected to transfer over. And what I suggest is that Dr. Tom and his practice is a known commodity, and I think there's value in that. And I also want to point out that the fact that he's only one and a half blocks away and he has neighbors, and it's not just neighbors, it's neighbors with shared walls. And I think that sort of goes further to the point that there was no one here saying, "We've got problems." In fact, we had quite many, the opposite. In closing, we've heard it, Asbury Park is a dog city. We've got the dog beach, we've got the yappy hour, which admittedly, sometimes when I jog by, the yappy hour places make me a little nervous, but that is just because of my fear. But I think Asbury is going to be a great fit. It's going to be a good fit for this practice, it's going to be an appropriate fit, and it's a use that works. So the, my client has been great for Asbury Park in the past, and my client wants to continue, wants to have the ability to continue to be great for Asbury Park in the future. And that would depend on this approval. We're in a risky situation here. I need five yes votes for this type of variance. I only have five vote, voting members, and through a quirk, that's the situation that we reluctantly have to deal with. So I really come to you with my hat in hand on behalf of my client. I thank you for the time. I thank you for your commitment. And I respectfully request your vote, knowing that one no vote will deny this project. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay. Now, if we go to next, all board members, may you state how you feel about this application, please?
I could, you want to start?
Yep.
I had trouble wrapping my head around the use variance. You have a great reputation in town. I know everybody loves you. It's in an R1 zone, and it's supposed to promote the general welfare. If it's not going to be a residence, it should be a hospital, childcare, schools. It has to inherently be beneficial for the public good. Uses that may not be attractive, we shouldn't approve things that are attractive just because they provide jobs, services, products, and recreation. They're not inherently beneficial. However, after hearing the testimony of everybody, including not just your clients, the neighbors, I believe it is beneficial for the public good. So my vote is yes.
And I just want to say to the people who showed up in support, particularly the abutting neighbors, thank you because you made the decision very much, I've struggled with this for a bit, so I'm definitely in favor at this point.
So I'm the visiting board member here. I have a couple of items that I just wanted to point out. I also struggled with the use variance, and I was very much on the fence on this. What I see is that the historic preservation, which has been brought up here and which is going to be a condition here, I see that this building is not suited to residential use in an R1 zone. It's an isolated parcel. I see that there's a lot of support for local businesses, and it enhances the quality of, quality of life, based on a lot of the comments that many of you have made. I appreciate the willingness of the client to, and the applicant, to make the modifications that the board suggested, which goes a long way of our concerns. I also am a fan of encouraging the appropriate development in an appropriate area. And I feel that, I believe that there is no substantial detriment to the public good here. I believe that this is, this application is good for the Asbury Park community. I believe that it's a good one for the Asbury Parks. Asbury Park is a city, so I vote yes.
I want to piggyback off all of my board members here, and I strongly believe that this is a benefit to the community, and I just want to say thank you to the applicant. I've never seen someone bring back their professionals and address so many of our comments, so I appreciate, especially your architecture, that, to make it soundproof, and your witness there, and your professional, and then the traffic engineer. I just want to say thank you. You've really addressed all of my comments. Those were the two things that were holding me back from approving this. I now think that you can definitely mediate any of the negative side effects that might come from the site, so my vote is yes.
Don't worry, don't worry, don't worry, don't worry. If I said no, y'all beat me up. First thing, Dr. Tom, after I visited your business on Tuesday, we didn't really, for me, didn't have to have a meeting. Okay, I was sold on your facility. I was sold on the kindness of your employees, the cleanliness of your facility, and how much your employees loved the animals when they came in here. And that's what counts. You are going to improve the community, you're going to work with the students in our community, and we need more business people like you in Asbury Park. Okay? So, no more vote, because we got to get out of here. So I will agree, and Ms. Sabina?
Well, let's make this official and get a motion and a second.
Maybe take the votes now?
Yes, please.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve. City by the Sea Veterinary, Dr. Tom, you know you let Cal, Cal into... Okay. Application, can I get a second, please?
I'll second.
Okay, one question.
Yeah, so if I may, because obviously, we're running into two issues. One is, we have our regular meeting scheduled for 7 o'clock. We're already at 7 or 8 at this point. And there were a lot of, a lot of items and conditions that we testified to. I think we do need to go and figure out what those, what those were so that we can identify those for a, for a resolution. If it's okay with the applicant, I think we can indicate that based on the testimony that has been provided and the conditions that have been accepted, that we can, we can make the motion based upon that. And then between Mike, myself, and Mr. Kennedy and Doug, we can identify and prepare the resolution to make sure we're not missing any of those items. And certainly, the board members are going to vote on the final resolution, so you'll have an opportunity to comment on that as well. Because that final resolution's not going to be approved tonight, as you all know.
That's what I was going to say. We still have to approve the final resolution, and it would take a long time to talk about that tonight.
And Mr. Chairman, for what it's worth, on behalf of my client, I certainly agree, and we reaffirm, and to honor all the commitments and promises and representations we made throughout this hearing process. So we have no problems with that. Great.
Okay. Ms. Sabina, if we may now have a vote?
Barbara Krizak, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Bernie Drummond?
Yes.
Daniel Harris?
Yes.
Selena?
Yes.
And Tim Quinn?
Yes.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Doc. And if we now may have a motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
Thank you all in favor?
Aye.
Y'all ain't got to go home, but you got to get out of here. Let's go.